My name is Sherlyn Womack. Welcome to the Lee County Board of Education Special Call Meeting today. Let the minutes reflect that we have started at 1,800 hours, I'm sorry, 1,600 hours. We have a quorum. We're missing one board member, Patrick Kelly, who may or may not be able to call in. The purpose of this special call meeting is solely to discuss the contract with the North Carolina School Board Association, their plan and process forward in reference to our superintendent search. And at this time, I would like to get an approval of the agenda.
It's a move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we will start now with Sam Thorpe, please. He is the Assistant Legal Counsel for the Superintendent Search at the North Carolina School Board Association. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Chair Womack, members of the board. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and thank you for hiring NCSBA to facilitate your superintendent search. We really appreciate this opportunity. In order to get your search started officially, there are just a number of documents, what we refer to as initial search documents, that we need to get your vote on and approval of at a regularly special called or regularly scheduled meeting, like the one we're at right now. And so I've brought, well, I emailed electronic PDF copies of the documents. I've also brought hard copies in folders, which are sitting in front of you. What probably makes the most sense is for us to just walk through each of the initial search documents and get your vote on and approval of them. Starting with, on the left side, behind the memo in the folder, is the draft timeline, which I have revised from the original, I don't know how closely you reviewed the proposal that I originally sent, but I have adjusted the timeline based on my conversation with your board chair earlier this week. And she mentioned wanting to move relatively quickly and ideally having someone certainly chosen and possibly even starting, I think, before Christmas or certainly before the first of the year. Is that?
Yes, sir. And for full transparency to our community, the rationale was the initial timeline had our superintendent starting in January.
Yes, ma'am.
We have multiple contracts that will be ending in December, so this made a huge difference. Therefore, we called the special call meeting in order to meet those timelines.
Yes. So in reviewing the timeline, I just want you to be aware of the fact that the dates have changed. Many of the dates have been moved up. It is a little bit of a tighter timeline, not in an unreasonable way in terms of what we average in working with boards. The only fixed date on the timeline, hard and fast date, is the application deadline, the one highlighted in yellow. We just have to set a date in time certain when the applications have to be submitted by. There is some flexibility with all of the other dates, but we want to stay somewhat close to them if you want to meet this projected introduction date, announcement and introduction date, in December. But I think we can, I obviously would never promise because circumstances change throughout the search, your circumstances as a board change in terms of your availability, but I think we can hopefully get this done by December. So if you're comfortable with the application deadline, you could vote on and approve just the application deadline and then make this, this can be sort of our target timeline and our sort of go-by in terms of each step.
Okay. Now, I want to make sure we clearly understand, on September the 18th is the application deadline, but you provide the application materials to the board on the 22nd. The 18th is a Friday. The 22nd is a Tuesday? Am I correct? Do they need an additional day to review all the applications, an additional workday before they can provide it to the board?
So I have September 18th as a Monday and September 22nd as a Friday.
Give me a second, I got this wrong. And the 22nd is a Friday?
So, and the reason we build in that time is because generally with an application, we get the application as well as several other supporting documents, and they're all in varying levels of organization. And so what we do is we very thoughtfully and deliberately, in a neat and digestible format, PDF, all of the application materials, along with an experience chart that we create that very concisely and clearly summarizes the relevant work experience of the applicants, and sometimes accompany that with a profile that you will have created, assuming you decide to do surveys. We post all of that, all of those application materials to an electronic site, Symbly. It's an online platform that only you, the board, will have a unique login ID and password for accessing. Two reasons we do that, one is, as I'm sure you know, applicants to your school system, including the superintendent, is entitled, are, all are entitled to confidentiality, and we've just found that the best way to guard and maintain that is by using a secure online platform. It's also just a lot more cheap and effective in terms of sharing that volume of paper. The reason we build in a few days is because it takes a little while, depending on the number of applicants and the number of attachments, et cetera, for us to organize all of that and get it up to Symbly. The 22nd would be at the latest. Sometimes we arrive a little bit earlier in terms of sharing those materials on Symbly. Sometimes it depends on how many other searches we have going on and how many other deadlines as well.
I apologize, I was looking at the month of August, not September.
It's okay. It's perfectly fine.
Next question is, when you provide this information, does it come with a matrix of any type? Like, we recently had our performance audit, and it provided a matrix where it had certain things at the top columns for them to be able to go through it. Is there anything like that, or is that something we need to establish ourselves?
So typically, what we do, and boards have found very helpful, is the, is the experience chart that I referenced, which is very thorough, and it's also very concise and clear in terms of outlining, in really a two- or three-page document, the relevant work experience. And boards find that really helpful. They don't necessarily not review any of the applications, but it helps sort of guide which ones they start with and which ones maybe they spend some of the most time with. There's also a component of the profile. If you were to decide to do the surveys, the community and staff surveys, typically at the end of those surveys, after I've presented the results to you, boards vary in their decision to create either a community and staff feedback input profile or a community and staff informed board profile that they would also use as sort of a rating chart and a matrix, along with the experience chart, to use as they're going through the application materials. As in, the community said it was really, really important that we have someone who was at least a classroom teacher for X period of time. Those kinds of things sometimes factor into the review. We do not screen any of the applicants. I'm not sure if that's, if that's...
During the optional meeting to review the community and staff input, I see the asterisk there. Is there a legal reason why that's done at a regular call meeting or work session?
It can be whenever you want it to be. It could be another special call meeting. Typically, boards like to do it at one of those meetings because it's presenting the public input that you've gotten on the superintendent search, and they want to have that at a meeting that has the most eyeballs on it. And typically, those are the more regularly, the regular scheduled meetings as opposed to the special call. But I've done, I've done special call, and if that date doesn't work or happens to be a busy evening, you know, we can find another time that's appropriate to do it, and you can invite the press and the public and be really deliberate about when you schedule it.
Does any board members have any questions in reference to this timeline?
Madam Chair, I do. Just regarding moving on down beyond the application deadline, the only meeting that is us, a body corporate meeting, is September 25. So we will have internet access to the application materials on or about the 22nd.
Yep.
And then we would meet as a board to choose first round interviews, and that would be a closed session meeting? Is that my understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So all meetings after the survey results meeting, that would obviously be all open session materials, will, every meeting there, thereon out, will be enclosed session because of confidentiality laws, North Carolina personnel confidentiality rights of candidates, and/or your attorney. Some boards include at various stages their board attorney, which is entirely up to you.
And I understand, because it says September the 12th, you actually kind of picked that date because that's our regular school board meeting as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
I looked at your board calendar, but again...
Very good.
We can be flexible.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I had a question or two, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Of the, the searches that you're involved with or that the NCSBA is involved with, what percentage would you say does the community and staff input profiles?
The vast majority. It's probably nine out of 10. It's maybe gone down to eight or eight and a half out of 10. The folks who have foregone doing surveys recently have been doing a search really close in time to the last one, and so they have a real frame of reference of what their community and staff are looking for within the past year and a half, two years, two and a half years.
Would you say that typically, school districts do both or one or the other or neither?
Most do both, and they like to compare sort of what are the most important characteristics, types of experience between their community and staff. What we've found, two things really, is that, number one, the way to get the most feedback and the most candid is by doing online surveys. We've done any number of other types of in-person things, and they haven't been well attended, and the feedback hasn't been as good. And so we've found that the online surveys are the best way to do it, and that the feature that the public and staff really like isn't so much the questions or the rating of the characteristics, it's the free response section at the end that we put no limitations on, that people can fill out anonymously and discuss in as much detail as possible, as many issues that they want that are really important to them and they want you to consider as part of your superintendent's search process. Now, it's, it can sometimes be a lot. Gaston County just had close to 3,000 comments that they had to review. But it was very informative and helpful, and they had a lot of robust participation, and that's because the board, with all sincerity, solicited that from their staff and community.
The anonymous is a plus and a minus, right?
That's true.
How do you, what checks do you have to ensure that the feedback is from the county and not from out of county or non-stakeholders to our school district?
We ask folks to, in the demographic questions, to identify whether or not they live in the, the school district, the district attendance zone. But there really isn't, without a much more expensive survey platform with some IP address, you know, policing that we don't use because it's so expensive and that cost would be borne by boards. So unfortunately, I think some of that happens, and we don't, I mean, the honest answer is we don't know the extent to which they're perverted by that kind of behavior, but surely that kind of thing goes on. Hopefully not to the extent that it materially or in a statistically significant way impacts your survey results.
Well, before we actually approve this timeline, I think that the board should actually discuss the community and staff input surveys. Since that is an optional item, if that's something you feel comfortable doing or not comfortable doing, there's, there's pros and cons. We always want to hear from our community.
100% true.
Without a shadow of a doubt, even for future reference, for things that we might can do to increase the educational experience of our students and the staff and the community as well. So I would like to open the floor for discussion for any board member that may have comments, either pros or cons for doing this optional survey. So we'll start with Sandra.
I think it's too important not to. It's been so long since we have hired the chief administrator of our school system that a political cycle certainly bring out certain concerns within the community, and I think it would be an excellent tool that would both inform this decision but also our entire course as we're setting up a strategic plan. I think it's a nice test drive of getting a feel for our community and staff member stakeholders and what they think is the important issues. I think it absolutely informs our goals as a board, since we are talking strategic planning initiatives. I think this is a perfect opportunity to start that process.
Chris?
I agree with Sandra 100%. The more we can get the community and staff involved, the more that they feel 100% as being a stakeholder. So I agree 100%. I ain't gonna fluff it none. I'm for doing the community and staff and surveys.
Okay. Eric?
Absolutely, we should do it. In fact, I thought we'd already decided that. I guess maybe informally, but anyway, absolutely, we should do it. I have a couple of questions, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
How robust is a platform that will do some of those things you were talking about, and what specifically will they do? Will they be able to limit the IP address only one time of commenting? I mean, how, that's one, how robust is a system that...
Survey Monkey is the platform that we use, which is widely available and widely used by other search consultants, and I think does a good job of preventing folks and has enough checks to prevent folks from filling it out over and over again. But I think to the extent you can find new IP addresses and/or new email addresses and registration information, you could potentially fill it out.
But you had mentioned a more robust that costs more money. What is, what...
We've never priced that, and I've never, what I have encountered in learning about those platforms is actually in talking to another school district that spent, separate and distinct from their superintendent's search, just for their community and staff input, quite a bit of money to hire an outside consulting firm that had their own platform that they had developed as a company that they used. And my understanding was they had much more stronger checks in terms of being able to say with certainty that there were no repeat survey respondents, for example.
So are there platforms out there that are available to us if we chose to go that route? Or do we have to create our own? Because I'm hearing two things from you.
I know that a lot of consulting firms sometimes build their own platform, like we, for example, explored building our own application platform. So I've never actually Googled to find out if there are other survey platforms that you wouldn't have to make that you could use. I've never...
Okay. You had brought it up, so that's why I'm asking.
I appreciate you asking.
Do you mind if we take a question from the floor with Rebecca in the back? She's our IT specialist.
Sure.
Rebecca, do you have a minute, ma'am? She's like, I'm not ready for this. Rebecca, do we have the capabilities within our school system to do a survey that would have tighter controls than what he's presented with Survey Monkey?
The survey stuff we use is through Google. So we use the Google Forms, and we can collect addresses to compare, you know, to see if there was duplicates submitted in, and we can, you know, keep it open within the school system or open it up to the public to get...
Okay. And is that similar to what you offer as well? Okay.
But there's really no way to check if it's in county or out of county, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, folks can enter whatever they want in either system.
Correct. So there's no...
For us, there's no way to do it. I don't think there is.
Collecting email addresses is a good way to ensure that your stakeholders, in terms of teaching staff, you know, to get an idea of how many respondents you had, but if I put in my Gmail address, that doesn't link me to any particular... Correct.
So there is a box in Google Forms that you can check that will collect the email address that you're logged into, so you can collect it automatically or have them enter it. But again, I can be logged in with my home account and put in my response.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. All right. Do you have any more questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Alan?
I guess I would just say I tend to agree with, with the question of should we do surveys for community and school system employees? You know, having, so reviewed some of these questions, and to be honest with you, I feel like some of them are kind of duh answers as far as if it's important or not, but...
Right.
But that's just me, and other people may not feel that way, obviously. The only thing I guess I had to offer, well, two things, I do like the open comments at the end because I think that always gets you some valuable feedback after people look at the, you know, kind of the multiple choice rate, these things on order of importance. I feel like that gets wheels turning sometimes, and hopefully people would, would give us some good feedback. But then also, I thought it might be good for the board to take this, the same survey as a separate batch, so we can gauge where we are as a board compared to employees and public as well, just see if we're all on the same page or if we need to consider adjusting. But besides that, yeah, I'm in full support.
Do you have anything else to add about the surveys?
This might be a silly question, but what's, is there an extra cost for the surveys?
No, sir.
Isn't built into what we've already paid for?
Correct.
So my suggestion as far as sort of controlling who, I'm in favor certainly of doing staff survey, and I think community survey is beneficial if you can sort of police a little bit. And I think, I used Survey Monkey several years ago, but I think there was a way to require an address to be put in, and so my suggestion is if that's the case, maybe we could require a name and address to be put in, just so we can kind of make sure that it's from a Lee County address. And I know that people could, you know, make up an address or something like that, but that might be, that might deter a little bit of the noise for the, for the survey results. But no, I'm in, I'm in favor for it, as long as it doesn't, you know, I'm conscious of the timeline too, so as long as we can do that in this timeline, I think it would be good feedback to have.
I have no problems with it. Is Mr. Kelly on the line yet? Okay. I just wanted to offer him that opportunity. The only thing is, I have no issues at all. I stand with this board that this is great, always have community input. I will remind the board that regardless of what input comes in from outside the community, the community has already spoken. They have voted you into office, and they expect you to make that final decision, and that's all I have on that. So if there's no other questions in reference to the draft timeline, I think that he's anticipating us taking a vote on just the draft timeline section.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the draft timeline, including the firm application deadline date of September 18th, '23.
Second.
Third and fourth.
Any more discussion? Okay. It's unanimous?
Sorry, the employment date to begin is 2024, so that's a, I mean, obvious typo there.
I appreciate you telling me that.
No problem.
He changes that the very last minute.
So the next document that I think makes sense to look at is the vacancy, which we'll then talk about where you want to advertise it, but for now, just to make sure, what we try to do is, as concisely as possible, provide some general information about your school system, community, very, very generally what you're looking for in a new superintendent, and then explain to folks who they can contact with any questions about the position, so that it prevents you, the board, from, from even appearing that you have some sort of bias for any of the candidates. We also provide hyperlinks to all of your school system materials, county and city materials.
Now, what is the recommended process you would have for this board? Because we first put this announcement out, and we did receive a few applicants. It's my understanding, the best way forward is to have them resubmit through the North Carolina School Board Association. Are we required to notify them, to let them know that for the people who've already put in an application, that they need to reapply through the North Carolina School Board Association? Is that something that our HR person can do?
That is really up to you, the board, to decide. I'm happy to contact them and have them reapply. I'm happy to contact them and consider, if the board wants me to, to not have them fill out the application and to just receive the application materials that you already have. I assume you already have.
Yes, we have them, but it would be different as far as your application.
It would be. Again, it's because it's the board's decision, I don't get to decide whether or not to rule in.
Is this included in your cost?
Yes, of course.
Well, then that would make it a no-brainer, that's less our staff would have to do, and then if you could just notify them and have them fill it out.
Reapply.
Yeah. Would that not make sense to everybody here?
I agree.
If someone would just forward me, if y'all will authorize your staff to forward me those.
Is Stacy back there? Oh, I thought I saw her. You will make a note? Thank you.
They can do via email, they can call me and give me, whatever they're most comfortable with.
Madam Chair, is the advertisement that we put out still on the website?
I don't know. I haven't seen it.
It would be, I think it would behoove us, if, if it is still out there, just to put a notation on there, you know, that position or, what am I trying to say?
You guys do that.
Vacancy announcement has reopened, please reapply because it just...
Yeah. Do you not provide a link for them to put on our school board site?
I will. Once you've approved everything tonight, you'll get an email from me tomorrow that'll be shared with your staff. That will include the survey links, it'll include the application hyperlink, it'll include a press release. But I will contact, if I get the individual contact information, I promise you I will get them on the phone.
Okay.
And explain, thank them for applying, of course.
Our current interim superintendent is not here tonight, but I will make sure, myself and Susan will ensure, that he can get that guidance to Ms. Eggers.
Okay.
And that'll work, and she'll send it to you.
Or if you're more comfortable through your board attorney, that's fine, too.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay. Next, sir?
Well, I just need you to, so the first question is, are you okay with this as the vacancy? Obviously, the only thing that'll change is I'll go ahead and fill in September 18th at the top of the vacancy announcement. The next, once this is approved, the next question is where you would like to advertise that. We, the, all of the advertising options are listed on, the handout on the right side. The vast majority that we use are free, and the only paid one that we recommend is in red. And again, it is entirely optional. Some boards use it, some boards don't. The feedback that we give boards, the information that we give boards, is we always ask applicants as part of their process where they found the vacancy, and the vast majority find it via the American Associates, AASA, the American Association of School Administrators, and that's why we advise 30 days of advertising, however expensive. And I do appreciate that that is, I mean, that's a big... And I do appreciate that that is, I mean, that's a big cost. But we do think it's worth it and that's why we always recommend that boards. But some do just choose on the top half of the handout, those free places which we always advertise with.
So your association, how many applicants have they had that actually went on to get hired as superintendents that had a successful reign for like five years plus?
We don't track that.
You don't track that?
And then, but so much goes in to whether or not a superintendent stays.
So when you do the applications, do you know the average number of applicants that you would receive without the American Association of School Administrators advertisement versus with that advertisement?
It would just be impossible for me to say. What I can say is that the majority, as in more than 75%, at one point it was more than 80%, found the vacancy and applied as a result of having seen the advertisement on AASA. Does that mean they would not have found it on our website or on some of these other freed, you know, social media places where we put it? That's unknown.
If we'd have known that, we could have just advertised with American Association of School Administrators and for a goner superintendent. That was a joke.
That's generally where I would always advertise. We've found that to be true and we work with other state associations that advertise and they've all said relatively, sometimes depending on the board, they have some other targeted places that they go with. But AASA is one of the, if you're going to spend money, that's where you spend it.
Madam Chair, do we need a vote or a discussion on the actual wording of the advertisement?
I think he was trying to put them both together, that and the advertisement and this one.
Stay with the advertisement. Sorry. I just, sometimes that's the natural question that comes up, is where are you going to advertise?
So let's see if there's any questions on the advertisement. That's a very interesting point, that that 80% is what comes back to you. And it kind of was a joke, but almost kind of serious. Had we known that, we could have went with their advertisement and made things a little bit simpler. But that being said, the board needs to discuss whether they want to go with the standard advertisement or we want to add the optional to it. My question with American Association of School Administrators, several of the sites that's underneath that were advertised, I decided to look them up myself online.
Sure.
And you learn a lot on these sites, what they promote and what they don't promote. With the American Association of School Administrators, is there not a login that you must log in for?
You know, I don't, I don't know if you actually have to be a member to see a vacancy on AASA. I would think that they would not, I know that AASA has membership dues, that they require to access certain materials and CLEs and things of that nature and chat rooms, things like that. But I do not think that they would require you to have a login to see an advertisement.
Does the American Association of School Administrators contribute to the North Carolina School Board Association in any form or fashion?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay. Board, got any more questions?
Madam Chair, the only, I guess, kind of obvious thing is there's a price for 30 days and 60 days. But since our closing date is 30 days from tomorrow, I definitely would not advise the 60-day mark.
And we wouldn't recommend that, obviously. And even folks that advertise for six weeks, for example, we don't recommend that they advertise for 60 days. 30 is perfectly sufficient to get it in front of enough eyeballs that will apply.
Madam Chair, I'm more just personally in favor of spending, if we're going to spend money, instead of using the AASA, put it toward the National Alliance of Black School Educators and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. That still comes in a little less than the AASA if we're going to do it.
If you're going to do it.
That's my thought.
And that's perfectly fine as well.
Anybody else?
I guess my opinion on it would just be given the number of applicants in the 70 to 80% range that cite the AASA is where they saw the post. I suppose I would be, I would lean towards using that one for the 30 days.
Do you feel like the candidates that you receive through AASA are diverse? I mean, do you feel like you're getting candidates from every demographic? Have you tracked any of that?
It varies so much depending on sometimes the time of year, the school district, the demographics of the school district, the demographics of the board, where the candidate's applying. I feel like we have, everyone wants their pools to be more diverse, you know, not just in terms of certain demographics, but also work experience, in-state, out-of-state, superintendent experience. What we have seen, and I can say with real certainty, is the numbers of applicants. Beginning in about 2020 with the pandemic, we saw a drastic reduction in the number of applicants. As in where we used to see mid-20s to mid-30s and even sometimes into the 40s, we were seeing mid-teens into the low 20s. That has gone up a little bit this calendar year of 2023 and we've seen as many as 28, 25, you know, just recently we had 18. But that's just to let you know that notwithstanding advertising for 30 days and spending close to $600, that you may very well only have 20 applicants or 18 applicants or even 15 applicants. I don't, I'm going to recruit very hard for it. And I do think this is a very desirable place to live and a very sizable district. And I think there's a lot of draws. But no one can promise you how many people will apply. And I also can't make any promises in terms of demographics. We feel really good about the diversity of our pool, but it's just impossible to say what.
Now, and this is just one board member's opinion.
Okay.
I personally am very comfortable with just doing the initial one, where the free advertisement that comes with our package.
Yes, ma'am.
Simply because the others that I have researched, they're good websites, but you must log into them. And if we're talking about, well, we're trying to get, we want to make sure it's fair across the board as far as blacks or Hispanics and making everything equal, they are more likely to be on a site where they do not have to pay. I know because I pay for some of these associations myself and some of them are not inexpensive. And for them, what part of this optional paid advertisement are we supporting a mission that falls under this category? And I don't think that our board has actually had time for each board member to actually go through and look at each one of those websites of where the advertisements are. And as far as applicants go, we already have, Stacy's not here, but I think we have about six or seven already. So, and that was just with advertisement on our website. Lee County is the greatest place to be. We are thriving community. We're growing. We're going to have the best schools ever. So there's no doubt in my mind that we will get very qualified candidates in. But that's just my humble opinion. And my rationale behind denying our not being in favor of the additional cost of the optional website advertisement is simply because I think we can get what we need from the above. But that's just one and I will go with the majority of the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sandra, you and Chris?
I'm not opposed to seeking the American Association of School Administrators. The vast majority of administrators that I know are members of AASA. But that notwithstanding, I just know the diversity of superintendents that have been hired in North Carolina. And if you're telling me that 80% saw it here, I'm just looking at the diversity of hiring. I've got to believe that the, across the board, demographics are represented because otherwise they wouldn't be hired. So that, I'm not opposed to spending the 559 for the 30 days of additional advertising in AASA.
Y'all should have added that price in your contract price. Being at 80%, the number's just so high, man, that's 25.5, 25.6, and they just include that already.
What we found is that some boards have very particular, some board members. Some board members don't mind. Some board members find it as being a minimal cost, given the volume of applicants that we get from it. Some have very strong feelings about associating as a board with these associations that advertise. And so we don't want you to feel like we're pressuring you to recruit candidates in certain places or to advertise with certain places that you don't affiliate with or don't align with ideologically. And so we just try to be really sensitive to that. But yes, we've considered that.
We bought the pot, now you're trying to sell us the lid.
That's a really good way to put it. Yeah.
And I agree that 75 to 80%, I mean, that's a high percentile that the applicants come from. And I agree, I don't mind spending that because the percentiles are high. I'm good with that. But as a board, we still have the right to vet all those applicants.
That's right.
You know, so if it gains us more applications, then it gives us more vetting opportunities to be able to hopefully be able to get the right candidate at the end. So I just wanted to let you know that you're trying to sell me the lid to the pot we've already purchased.
That's a really good way to put it. But I also want to emphasize what you just said. And it's because I haven't had a chance to present to you, or I did with my written materials. But we in CSBA, and I'm sure you already know this, do not screen. We're never going to tell you which application to look at, who to hire or not hire, who to interview or not interview. North Carolina law makes abundantly clear it is locally elected boards of education exclusively that hire superintendents and we do not get in the way of that. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Would, just for the record, before we vote, I would lean towards advertising all three places, AASA, National Alliance of Black School Educators and Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. That would be my preference.
Okay. Any more discussion? Regardless of how we vote, just so you know, my lesson learned from today is we initially probably could have went with the American Association Administrators or to the ad placements and perhaps maybe, maybe not save the county a little bit of money. But I understand the man hours that goes into this is a lot. And that's a lot to ask for the chair and our board secretary to do. We did have some board members that said, why don't we just do this ourself? I don't think you realize, I mean, I'm just one board member, but I'm going 10, 12 hours, four days a week. And we have board members with full-time jobs doing a lot of things. And that was rationale that I gave to the community on why we're hiring you for these services.
Madam Chair, I certainly don't want you to feel pressured into using us.
But I, we, we've already voted, we have voted for your services. We have not signed your contract yet. And we're, I think, and I hope you don't mind me saying this, that before the board meeting, I spoke with him. So there's nothing that he can do to negotiate this contract. Even if, you know, as Chris mentioned out, you know, we bought the pot now. You asked us to pay for the lid. I truly get that. But now we have to decide, do we want the rest of the accessories that go with it? Do we, what would you guys like to have? And whatever you would like to have, we can go forward with that. What, Alan?
You want to say something? I can make a motion if you want me to.
Yes, if someone would make a motion, we'll go for it.
I'd make a motion to approve the, what do we call this document?
The vacancy.
To approve the vacancy document as presented and to advertise in the free locations with the addition of American Association of School Administrators for 30 days.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Is that 3-2? No. Okay.
Six of us.
Oh, forgive me.
Did we have an abstention?
I didn't hear someone.
I think it was 4-2?
4-2.
4-2. Forgive me.
And just for clarification, because I would like to know, the rationale for the no is because you wanted to add the other two?
That's correct, for me at least.
All right, motion passes. We're going with the American Association of School Administrators for 30 days.
Madam Chair, given that concern about adding the other two, I'll float a motion to add the National Alliance of Black School Educators and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents.
Second.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Please state the motion, please.
I move that we approve the advertising as we've previously voted in favor, but also add the Black School Educators and the Latino Administrators and Superintendents advertising to the mix is the motion. And I think Ms. LaDotta seconded it.
And I would agree to that. So all in favor of adding those two?
Aye. Aye.
So it's 4-2 again, except for the other direction. So now we have added the National Alliance of Black School Educators and Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. And thank you, Senator, for that clarification.
Can you clarify that vote who just voted?
I don't think we voted against. I think, can we raise a hand for aye?
Who is in favor of adding the National Alliance of Black School Educators and Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents? Please raise your hand. That's what you wanted. Did you change your mind?
I didn't want the AASA. I said in place of.
In lieu of. You didn't. That's correct.
Okay, but this motion is only for those two. So are you voting against those two?
Yes. Madam Chair, I do not have to give a reason for my no vote.
No, I'm not asking for a reason. I just want to make sure that you're voting no on the two that you requested earlier.
Yes.
Okay. Did you get that this time, Susan?
All right, thanks.
Okay, so just two more decisions. One is the application. And I don't know how closely you've looked at it or even had a chance to look at it. But the vast majority of what's in it is very generic in terms of work experience, education experience, licensure, et cetera. The two pages where there are short and long-form essays are on pages nine and 10. Vast majority of boards keep those questions as is. We're happy to customize those. However, boards really like to save customized questions or more pointed questions about their district, about their central office, things like that for the interviews or for a presentation that you might have them prepare for the interviews. There's also, I'm not speculating about any of your applicants, but a lot of boards fear, given all the resources you have in filling out an application, you know, they would prefer to have some of the answers live to some of the more pointed questions as opposed to putting those in the application and using this more as a screening tool. That's not me saying we can't change the essay questions or customize them for you, but it's just me giving you some information in what boards typically do, which is they take the application as is and save the more customized, district-specific, board-specific questions for the interviews.
Madam Chair, if I may, I had a question or two. I guess first question would be, are essay questions typical for superintendent application? I mean, I'm assuming since you included they are, but I've just never personally seen longer-form questions, I guess, on an application.
We've always included them and we've always had boards want them. You know, sometimes I have seen boards who've whittled it down, you know, and maybe instead of 10 and 6, they do 5 and 2, you know, in terms of short and long-form essays. But they do usually want some written responses above and beyond the cover letter, the resume and the typical, here's where I went to school and here's where I've worked.
Sure. And I mean, I guess the notes I wrote for myself flipping through that was it feels like a resume and like a first-pass interview in the application, which I don't necessarily have a problem with because I think you just said it. It's kind of like a first screen and we get some answers ahead before we ever bring somebody in to do an interview. So I don't necessarily disagree with anything here. It's just, I guess, longer than any application I've ever personally seen.
And it is a lot to review. I mean, boards usually like having it, when they do the screening, they also like having it as a reference point when they're in the interview to ask about something specific or maybe refer back to if something's inconsistent or not clear in terms of what they're answering and what they've provided in their application. But again, it's your application. It's your search, so. And I don't know how much this differs necessarily from the application that you put out originally either and how satisfied or unsatisfied you were with that. So you do have a frame of reference for at least one application that you've tried.
The reference that they received online is definitely not quite as long as this one.
I see.
And so that, therefore, another reason that we need to have them reapply with the North Carolina School Board.
Yes, yes, ma'am, of course.
And I think one of the questions may have started out is, do you have the, do you hold a valid superintendent license or the ability to get one? Because that's not necessarily a requirement.
It's not?
And.
And we can take that question out. Most boards like to know that regardless of whether or not.
We don't want to deter people from continuing the application process by not having that. That, because that's not required by law, that's the only reason I brought that up.
You're 100% right. Candidates know that. And, but boards very, very much want, the ones that we work with still want to know, do they have it or do they not? And if so, you know, have you verified that either by looking it up, which we do on DPI, or have they provided a copy evidencing their.
I mean, I said the first question as opposed to just last answer was, why Lee County? Why do you want Lee County? I think that would be a good thing for the board to know. Why would you choose Lee County? Why would you choose Lee County? I'm not saying that's, that's a bad question. I'm just saying it's, it's not exactly a requirement by law. And when we start out with that, it's like if somebody who is a, someone who is applying to be a teacher, but they don't have the teacher's certification yet, the first thing they say is, do you have your certification? We'd be more likely to want to know, why do you want to be a teacher in Lee County schools? And then we can assist them in getting through the rest of it. I don't know what the, the board feels about that. I just feel like that very first question, it may or may not deter people, but it would also, I think it would be a, it'd probably be more appropriate if we had another question that was as soon as they got on to the application process. Why Lee County? Personally, I'd say why not Lee County, but that's, so.
Well, and hopefully they have addressed that in their cover letter, as to why they're specifically applying.
For what it's worth, too, that very first long form question is, why are you leaving where you are and why are you coming to us? Because I think both of those are very telling. You know, I'm leaving because I'm a huge school district and I feel, you know, overwhelmed and I want to go smaller, or?
That's on this question that I'm looking at?
The long form essay. It's the very first one.
It's on pages nine and 10.
This is the part they fill out, on the green part, from line? So that's the first thing they get online, correct?
They would put their name, address, all of that contact information, which is super important for us, but yes, then we do ask.
So this is, so that is not the first question they see, or it is the first question?
No, ma'am. And, and folks who've applied through us, and they, we do get a lot of folks, you know, who reapply in different searches that we're doing, are fully aware that we ask only because some boards would like to know whether or not someone has a license, not because, because it's been more than a decade now that you don't actually have to have to have a superintendent's license to be, to serve as a superintendent here in North Carolina.
Madam Chair, would it be easy enough to that first question to maybe just put a disclaimer that, so do you hold a valid superintendent license in North Carolina? Not required, in parentheses, or something like that, if there's concern of that turning somebody off?
I had a similar idea as far as, you know, there's a statement, if you do not hold a superintendent's license, explain, and you could just say, you could kind of build that statement out to say not having a superintendent's license is.
Or would you be willing to become certified?
How we've addressed this, just so you, obviously, we're happy to do any of this, but in our, all of our vacancies, unless a board doesn't want it, and no, no board has taken it out, in our vacancy under who should apply, we put the caveat, candidates must meet the legal requirements to be licensed as a superintendent or otherwise be qualified and eligible to serve under SBE policy, which is, a local board of education deems the candidate having worked five years in a relevant, has, have five years relevant work experience and have a four-year degree. And so applicants know, the question about the license is just really more of a practical standpoint, as in when you, if you hire this applicant, are you going to have to do it through a resolution, which is perfectly fine, I'm sure your attorney's done several of those, or can you go the licensure route, which is, I think, administratively a little bit faster in terms of getting the contract approved by the state board?
Ellen, can you repeat what you said one more time? I don't like that idea.
Oh, so I, I was just saying on the, the opening question about, do you hold a valid superintendent license in North Carolina, just add in parentheses, not required?
Okay. Is everybody okay with that disclaimer? That would clear it up easy, easy? Could you do that, sir?
Sure.
Okay.
Is that, the board would like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Otherwise, are there any other changes that the, the board would like to make to the application?
Did you have a question that I forgot to ask on the timeline?
It's okay.
But how far back do your background checks and credit checks and criminal checks go?
As far as you want us to go. The criminal, we do four main parts of a reference check, which are the four things you can check, criminal, credit, reference, and internet and social media searches. The criminal credit goes, goes as far back as you can go, and we use a third-party, Baker U-Banks, to do that. I mean, there is a cost that you can approve associated with that. The reference checking, we go back at least five years, not for the references they give us, the ones that we have found are most important to talk to with our own questions that we have found we need to ask. And if you would like, we can go back farther, either within the five years or even farther than that. We also get a lot of detailed salary and benefit information. When it, that informs the contract negotiation phase, but we wouldn't do that until the final interview.
What are you thinking, Jamie?
I, well, my initial thought was go back as far as you can, but I, I mean, I'm satisfied with the answers that were given right there, so.
You said five. I was thinking seven, but ain't no sense in spending money for two more years. If you can find out everything you can in five, that's a good question.
But it does go back as far as you can on the criminal.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, and the references are a little nuanced, you know, depending on how long someone worked in the district, how many board members or current board members actually worked with them, and if so, for how long and in what capacity. Same thing with supervisors. Some have superintendent experience, and so they didn't have a direct supervisor, but, and we would work with you. And generally, boards know, once I've posted all that assembly, we need some more reference checking, and you let me know that, and then I go get more. Or in the midst of talking to the candidate, you go, you know what, I want to talk to. And I encourage you to lean into that and do it. If you're got to say, we need some more information, we can go get it. That's what we're here for, so. It sounds like the application we can move forward with.
Any more questions on the application? Take a motion on that one, please, Senator.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the application instrument as presented with the minor edit of not required on the credentialing.
You too.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so last step is the surveys, which it sounds like at least the majority, maybe all, of the board wants to do, or is considering doing. Obviously, I'll answer any questions about them.
Just give them a second to look over it.
Actually, I'm looking at the very first item where you check all that apply to you, because I was really thinking of that. I'm in a weird situation where I'm on the Board of Education, so I'd like to fill out, like you said, get an idea of how the board sits, but I'm also a parent, but I'm also, you know, I'm a million of these people, so to fill it out to represent each hat I wear, but I like to check all that apply to you and then make it into a single instrument. That, that works for me. That would answer a big question I had.
Right. And, and sometimes you get folks who say, wait, I'm on the staff, can I not fill another one out for the community? Of course you can fill out another one for the community.
Because frankly, you feel differently in, in different roles.
Well, and we've had a lot of people say, they submitted very different comments as a staff member and then as a parent with a child with special needs, or, you know, a really challenging bus route that doesn't get serviced as often as a child, or so on and so forth.
Again, I like to say, I like the survey, because like Senator said before, not something just our strategic plan, but it also lets us know what our community, what their expectations are, not just in the superintendent role, but in reference to our school system. For instance, it talks about the use of development of technology and teaching and learning, new approaches to teaching and learning. I think this kind of lets us know very well how our community feels. So I'm definitely in support of this.
My eyes went straight to the discipline stuff, I guess, on my mind, since we had our, since we had our policy meeting yesterday, and that became an issue and a topic we were talking about. So I, I think we'll get the good, the bad, and the ugly, but that's good, because there's no such thing as bad information, bad data. Data is just data.
I guess on, on the presentation of this, when the surveys are finished, do you guys, do you break this down for us as far as, you know, these demographics of select all that apply to you, or do you just kind of give us the raw?
We do give you a bar graph breakdown of all of the bubbled survey responses. The comments, we don't, we don't want to editorialize, okay? Misinterpret, miscommunicate the very meaningful and sincere feedback that your community and staff are trying to give you. So what we do with the comments is, as soon as we get them and have them PDFed, is we post those to assemblies, so you have as much time as possible to review them, then, and those are raw. But again, we don't want to editorialize, you know what I mean? Which you can get into doing when you start trying to summarize comments about specific issues. What we do have to do, because the comments are a public record, under, under North Carolina freedom of information laws, they just are a public record, to the extent they don't include any confidential personnel information or personal identifying student information. So I have the unenviable task, but important task, of reviewing all of the comments twice and redacting any references that could identify a student, that could identify a staff member, or does in fact identify a student and staff member. The board is legally entitled to review the unredacted comments, along with your board attorney. The public, to the extent there's a public records request, is allowed to see the redacted comments. One thing I want to make abundantly clear, and our survey does make clear, it's anonymous. We don't know, no one ever knows, at, at any point, who the survey respondents are, but the, the substance of the comments, to the extent they don't have any confidential information in them, they are a public record. And so when I come, I'll have organized PowerPoint summaries of the bubbled survey responses, the comments I will bring, or actually, I'll share electronically with your board attorney and probably your PIO, so you can respond to any records requests you get about the comments. Hopefully that answers.
Yes. Yeah, that's great.
So what we can expect from you is a slide that has it broken down, like you said, with the paragraph.
Show, yeah.
And then we will have one document that has all the additional comments listing. So it won't all be separate, so we're not going through like, if, let's say a thousand people, we would not have a thousand different pages. We would just have, you would have them all broke down.
We create a survey summary, which very neatly and concisely summarizes everything. We then put that summary into a PowerPoint presentation, slide deck of like 10 to 15 slides roughly, and we have the redacted comments. The two, the summary and the PowerPoint are going to be very neat and organized and not many pages. You'll easily be able to review that, and that'll be available to the public as well. The comments, however, will be in a raw PDF form and will be, it can be hundreds of pages, but again, it'll be electronic that you're reviewing it, either on an iPad, or, you're welcome to print it, but you just have to be really careful about printing those.
And so their input period, their survey timeframe is over on the first, am I correct? And so when will you be providing those to us to review before our board meeting on the 12th?
As soon as possible. So you know, that is a Friday. We usually keep it open until midnight, and I don't know if that's leading into Labor Day weekend. I do have a couple of administrative specialists that help me with this, so I don't know if it would be Tuesday before we put, posted that assembly, but we would do it as soon as, as possible and give you as much time as possible. But it is a tight timeline, and so whereas we like to give, you know, two weeks or two and a half weeks to review that, we just don't, it would depend on when we met, actually. We could move the meeting if you needed more time to review the comments.
Well, I think the meeting's fine. I just want to make sure you get to, as, the reason I would like for it to get to the board as soon as possible is because four days before our board, according to policy, we have all the materials before us to read, and they'll have other things to be going through as opposed to just this. So if you could kind of get it to us, that will make sure we get it out where it needs to go.
I will try to, I'll make a note of that and try to get it to you as fast as possible.
That'll work.
Given your comments on anonymity, I mean, if we were to try and require an address to fill out the community survey, is that even, is that even feasible? I mean, would that be a, a legal issue, or?
My strong recommendation is to not ask for additional, those types of demographic questions. It usually dissuades folks from responding to the survey. Some boards do it, but in my experience, boards have found that the respondents, some find, some get feedback that they didn't respond to the survey because of those specific questions. Others read the comments that are very critical of the board for asking, and they don't trust why you asked that, and they're, they mistrust what you're going to do, what conclusions as a board you're going to make as a result of X address or other demographic information that you ask. So it's delicate. You want it, and you want it for good reasons, for very good reasons, I think, but it's, it's tricky, and so most boards decide not to do that. And know that there's going to be some of the however many survey responses you get, there's going to be some that are repeat and non-helpful, but the vast majority will not be.
Well, I was looking at, we'll have these results from him on the 12th. We're not actually having to do anything as a board corporate with them until the 22nd, when we, well, really, no. Ideally, we'll get the data from the community and the staff. We'll use that to inform our matrix for evaluation of the instruments. We won't get instruments to review until the 22nd of September.
That's right.
So, I mean, it's not quite as crushed. I was feeling the same way, like, we're going to, they're going to close on the first, and then we got to have them by the 12th processed? No, we don't actually have to process them until the 22nd.
You just have to read through them.
Right.
So in case you have questions, when he presents it to the board on the 12th.
Correct. And in Gaston, which I just did, I just presented their survey results. They had 3,400, 400, 3,400-plus survey responses and I think close to 3,000 comments, and some board members said, I'm still reviewing them. You know, I've read through 2,000, but I'm still, yeah, I think it's perfectly reasonable, depending on the volume and depending on your other business, to say, I'm reviewing these closely, I'm going to read every comment, but I have not had a chance to, to review every single one. I think that's.
And so when he presents to the board on the 12th, quite frankly, he's given out just like two slides, possibly four, but he's not going through 3,000 comments. That's for us to review on our own.
That's correct.
And then as we go through that process, I'll argue or redact the ones, and we can help Steve when he does that, too, make sure he didn't miss anything.
Well, I'll actually redact them. I'm not going to stick to your board attorney with that. I'll do it.
I'm sure he'll appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know what your volume of survey responses will be. My guess is you have tons of interest in your school system. I think you have a really, you know, robust media and community who's really interested in the school system and will respond, but, you know, it varies. It is the beginning of the school year, you know, it, it varies, you know, in terms of the response numbers.
How do you, so this is my last question, I promise. How do you advertise the survey and solicit people to, you know, fill it out?
So what we do is we, we share with you the links and encourage you to put those in all the places that you typically.
We would do that.
Yeah, exactly. And however, you would want to push out, in whatever way you communicate with your staff, multiple reminders and opportunities for them to fill it out. But, and this is really important for you as a board to hear, and this is just because we've heard this a million times, is the community doesn't want to hear from me to fill out the survey. They want to hear from you, the board, that you're interested in them filling out that survey. And the more you push it and say you want them to fill it out and encourage them to, when you see them or at a, at a meeting that you have, the more likely you are to get responses. People do not like hearing that, because I'm not picking the superintendent, I don't know them, and I don't live here, and there's a lot of resistance to that. Yeah.
Our local media is very supportive of the public education, so I'm certain they will help us out.
I think they will, I think they will, and I think, yeah, okay. And you can advertise it really well on your social media. I saw you have tons of social media, so I think you can.
And James is here from PR, and I'm sure that James assists us getting it out in all the schools and on our website, so this, this is good. Is there any more questions before you get an agreement on this particular section? Is this the last thing?
It is the last, unless there's any questions.
Is there any more questions on the survey?
I just want to make sure you're going to try to sell us the water that goes in the pot.
I'm going to quote you on the, in the pot.
Trust me, we'll have that on.
How about the handle?
It's not his first rodeo. Okay, so let's, all right, so in summary, I mean, before we go forward, does anybody want to make a motion on just that one section?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair.
A second, anybody?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. In summary, before we close out, I want to make sure we have everything that we have discussed kind of put down here together. What we're going to do is make sure the ad is removed on our site if it's still up there. Ms., Ms. Britt is going to make sure, she's going to relay to Ms. Bridges to provide you with the applicants to Mr. Thorpe.
Yes, ma'am.
And you will be responsible to contact the individuals who have already applied and to have them reapply.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a PR person in the back who's going to make sure we get these summary surveys out wherever you want those to be. We also have a newspaper here who's going to help us out, man in pink, we're not selling him out. And we also need to notify Ms. Jones that we will probably need a budget amendment at the next board meeting, because this changes what we had originally agreed to. So she will be having to add the additional of the advertisement, which one of the 30 days was $559. Then you have another $250 for one and $250 for the, I mean, $200 for the other one. So if someone would, please get that to Ms. Jones.
I think it's $1,009, if my math serves.
Yes, but she will need to lay those out in our budget amendment for our next board meeting. Is there anything else, any doouts you guys can think of? Okay. Sounds like a plan. I would now like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I will make the motion to adjourn.
I'll give you a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, sir.
You'll get an email from me tomorrow and hopefully you have my cell phone, you really are welcome, any.